Because they're knocking all ours down and then we can buy and get a free tree.
All those really beautiful trees.
Yeah, but they've given away free trees. That's fine, you can say.
Right, can everyone settle down now please? Nearly time to switch on the YouTube channel.
I'm just gonna go check if that mic's on upstairs. I'm just gonna check the public mic is on, but you can start.
Yeah, I believe it is. Believe it is. Right, good evening everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the planning committee. I'm Jeanette Soshin and I chair the meeting. Before we start, I have some announcements to make and it's all about emergency evacuation procedures. In the case of a fire, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately following the green exit signs out to the assembly point which is by the War Memorial on Duke Street. Lifts should not be used. Please remain at the assembly point and do not attempt to return to the building until you've been advised that it's safe to do so. Anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but only councillors, officers and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure the cameras are pointed only in this direction. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on YouTube. Please reduce silence or switch off your mobile phones while the meeting is taking place. Thank you. Now first of all, we have apologies for absence.
Thank you Chair, I've had apologies from councillors Fraskona and, no, sorry. Fraskona, no, let me get this right. I've had apologies from councillors Large and Tron and councillors Fraskona and Walsh are subbing.
Right, thank you very much. Are there any other apologies? No, that's fine then. Declarations of interest? Are there any declarations this time? I'm afraid you're on the, you're not on the council, so it's only on the planning committee we need to declare. Okay, and then you can speak later, okay? Thank you. Right. Moving on to the minutes of the 5th of September, is it your wish that I sign them as a true record? Thank you. Right, moving on to item six, which is twenty-three zero zero one nine five F U L. Garages rear of twenty-seven Medway Close, Chelmsford, Essex. Can we have the officers' report please? Yeah, well, just a moment, we need the screens working.
Thank you Chair. This application is for six affordable rent dwellings. The land is owned and operated by the city council. Objections have been received and therefore the application is called to the planning committee for a decision. The application site is located within the urban area of Chelmsford. It is a brownfield site which is comprised of hard standing and garages which were originally allocated for residential parking and storage purposes when the wider estate was developed. There are thirty-two existing garages on site in varying states of dilapidation and disrepair. Out of the thirty-two, only two are still used by existing tenants for the parking of vehicles. Therefore, thirty of these garages are not used for the parking of vehicles. Access is gained from Medway Close on the ins, sorry, on the eastern side of the application site. The access runs between the side elevation of number thirty Medway Close and the adjacent properties to the north west along Avon Road. The eastern and northern boundaries of the site meet the long rear gardens of properties fronting Medway Close and Avon Road. The southern and western boundaries meet undeveloped woodland. There are no protected trees within the vicinity of the site. This application proposes the construction of a terrace of five four-bedroom, six-person properties and a one-bedroom masonet over carport spaces. All of the proposed properties are to be offered for affordable rent. Two new garages are also proposed to replace existing garages which are still tenanted on the site. The application proposes suitable pedestrian and vehicle access arrangements into the site, including the widening of the existing site access and provision of a pedestrian walkway. Existing access for neighbouring residents, rear gardens and one garage is also retained by the proposed development. The council currently has numerous statutory homeless households requiring four-bedroom accommodation that are currently housed in temporary accommodation, awaiting an offer of permanent affordable housing. The application seeks three of, sorry, si- six affordable housing units, making this a hundred percent affordable housing scheme. The application would create five four-bedroom, six-person houses which will meet the council's priority housing need at present. The one-bedroom, two-person flats is also proposed to be provided as affordable rented housing that will meet priority housing needs. The main considerations for this proposal are parking displacement, design, flood risk and neighbour relationships. Other considerations such as parking access, technical compliance with development standards and other material considerations also apply. Concern has been raised from local residents that the proposed development would have a harmful impact on the existing properties on Avon Road to the north of the site and Medway Close to the east. The distances between the proposed dwellings and the end of the rear gardens of the existing dwellings is roughly ten metres. Whilst the local plan Appendix B recommends a distance of fifteen metres, it should be noted that the rear gardens of the existing properties are relatively long at over twenty-five metres. As such, the majority of the garden areas of these properties are over the fifteen metre recommended distance from first floor windows in the proposed development. Furthermore, the back-to-back distances between the proposed dwellings and the existing developments to the north exceed thirty metres. This exceeds the recommended minimum distance for two-storey development rear windows serving habitable rooms on upper floors of twenty-five metres as per Appendix B of the Chelmsford Local Plan. The amount of habitable rear room windows has also been reduced from two to one, further limiting perceived harm to these existing properties. The flank wall of plot six to the east does not contain first floor windows and is over twenty-seven metres to the nearest property. Local residents have also raised concern that the proposed development would increase noise pollution to existing properties. Although there would be an increase in noise in the area, this would be extremely minimal owing to the residential nature of the use and considered in context with a residential setting. A refusal of planning permission could not be justified on this basis. For these reasons, the proposal complies with policy DM twenty-nine of the Chelmsford Local Plan. Local concern has also been raised about existing parking pressures within Medway Close. The consideration to be applied is whether the proposal would exacerbate these issues. Whilst the existing parking stresses have been considered, the proposed development would provide policy-compliant levels of parking in excess of minimum provision based on proximity to city centre and other facilities. The existing garages on the site are not in practice used for car parking and the proposed development incorporates sufficient parking for future occupiers and visitors. As such, the proposed development is not considered to give rise to any additional material impact on parking in the local area. Access to the site is to be taken from Medway Close in the same position to the existing car park access. No matters of principle arise from this proposal and the works, including a traffic regulation order, will need further agreement by the local highway authority. The site is to be serviced from within the site. Submitted with the application is a refuse and recycling strategy plan which confirms that all the units have legible pathways from on-plot storage to the shared bin collection point. Overall, the parking and access provision is acceptable and the proposal would not result in increased parking pressures in the local area. The design of the new dwellings has been influenced by the existing design and character of neighbouring properties and the wider estate. The development would respect the design and layout of the wider estate and the impact on the character of the area is acceptable. Concern has also been raised that the proposal would result in flooding from surface water. The site is located within the St Andrews Critical Drainage Area. As such, the application is accompanied by a flood risk assessment and drainage strategy. There are a number of surface water flow paths within the site and as such there is a risk of surface water flooding. As a result of this however, the built form has been situated away from the primary routes and also raised in floor level. The assessments undertaken demonstrate that the risk of flooding from all sources is generally low. The development can be operated safely without significantly increasing flood risk elsewhere. Some residual risks have been identified but appropriate mitigation measures proposed to manage these. The lead local flood authority, Essex County Council, have been consulted on and have agreed the proposals with the applicant. The development will therefore be safe from flooding and will not increase flood risk elsewhere. So to conclude, the application would have a positive impact on affordable housing in Chelmsford by providing six units for social rent. The level of separation achieved means that the proposal would not have an adverse impact on neighbouring properties. The proposal meets the standards for internal and external amenity set out in Appendix B. Policy-compliant levels of parking would be provided as well as access provision for all types of vehicles. In addition, the expected level of parking displacement can be accommodated in local streets and the development would be safe in terms of flood risk which is supported by Essex County Council. Approval is therefore recommended, subject to conditions included in the officer reports.
Right, thank you. Now before I call people to speak, you have quite a few of you wish to speak tonight. So I must explain that it's two minutes each for you to speak and later on the councillor, the city councillor will speak and she can speak for longer if required. But please keep your comments carefully understood. Please try not to repeat because otherwise we already have all your information here which helps us already to look at the application in advance. So you are adding to our information, but please try not to repeat one after another, okay? So if I can start please, Mr Duckers? Thank you, Mr Duckers, there's a microphone there, it should be on.
My name's Thomas Duckers, I live at number nine Avon Road. I had a number of comments in there about the access to the site which runs behind my house. As I've mentioned that the, we had our garden redeveloped last year and new fencing placed and it was impossible for the builders' merchant to get their lorry beyond a kink in the entrance width at number seven and had to lift all the goods round over our neighbour's garden and into ours because it was just impossible to reach there. There were some, in the transport statement it showed the bin lorry access which it said it could manage, but in actual fact part of the tracking actually ran over our fence, on our fence line and at one point actually it goes over the fence line into our garden. So therefore it would assume that the width is not enough. With the fire engine tracking, they said again it ran virtually along the fence line, but subsequent, it's been pointed out that the the fire engine dimensions were shown as two point four metres wide, but in actual fact the measurement should be two point nine eight metres wide. That was from, from the fire service. And therefore that is, you know, over half a metre wider and if it was having trouble at that point, I don't see how it can now still be able to achieve entrance into the site.
Thank you, Mr Duckers.
Is that my two minutes?
I'm afraid your two minutes is up, but I'm sure all these comments will come out and be listened to. Can I, is Mr Beust here?
I'm George Beust, I live at number eleven, which is next door to Tom.
Yeah.
I've lived there for twenty-nine years and all the time I've had access into my garden from the rear. There's been a gate there, there was a gate there when I moved in. When they knocked down the last garages, they blocked off all the gates. And in their plan, it shows the building putting trees and bushes right up to my gate. So that will mean that my children, well, which are grown lads, have no access to get out to work. That's the main thing. There's also states that there is no ponds or anything within the area. The pond I have in my garden, two-metre circumference, breeds newts and frogs. When they put up the fence after knocking down the garden, that stopped the frogs coming in and now there's less newts coming in. This will stop them all. Another bit they've put here about that they do realise there's a badger set within half a mile of the site. There's a very large one on the fields under Little Parish. That was mainly it, okay?
Yep, thank you very much. Right, moving on to Mrs Matson.
Hi, my name's Charlotte Matson, I live at nineteen Avon Road, so just up the road from my neighbours there. A couple of things that they've mentioned already that I had, but one of the things that I'm concerned about is the parking survey claiming eighty-four spaces, this is absolutely untrue and when you look at the parking survey, both sides of Thames Avenue have been counted, both sides of Medway Close have been counted. You cannot park cars on both sides, you would not be able to access the road. Outside of my house, I have a driveway, but opposite my house there is a large green with some houses, terraced houses set back off the road. That part of the road has also been counted as adequate parking. There are no cars parked there because the road curves and it's not safe. So my neighbours over the road who don't have driveways still don't park their cars there. So this has all been included to make it look like there's adequate parking, but there isn't and this is going to cause such an issue in our area. So that was my main concern for the parking. The access is also a concern, the pedestrian walkway, I have young children. How is somebody with young children, a buggy and kids either side going to walk down this pedestrian pathway? Houses with, you know, apparently six people living in them, five of those houses. How are they going to safely walk in and out of this development when they are not clear sighted with somebody turning in or out? The other thing that was on the online thing was the trips, the number of trips that they've estimated will be increased. They've increased between eight and nine o'clock a maximum of three trips in and out of the site. If there's five houses with four children in each, how are those kids getting to school? That's a lot more than three trips, so that's obviously not accurate as well. This, it's, and the measurement thing as well, the ten point five metres, because I've got a long garden, apparently the Chelmsford Local Plan rules don't apply, that's, that's not fair. So yeah, those were my points, thanks.
Thank you. Mrs Scarrett?
Hello, I'm Rachel Scarrett. I accept the need for social housing, but it does need to be safe. There are multiple breaches here of the local development plan and fire safety regulations. Paul Coleman, Fire Safety Manager for County, has raised his concerns with the planning department on Friday at a meeting. The access road should be six metres wide, not three point seven. The figures used for the turning head are wrong. It's not permissible for emergency vehicles to need to reverse twenty metres and the planning department knows that. After the Grenfell disaster, it's astonishing that this council is pursuing this application which they know will need to be redesigned to meet with fire safety regulations. And from a neighbour's perspective, the houses must be fifteen metres from our boundaries. The block plan which is in your agenda at page one hundred and thirty-seven shows that they are all only ten metres from our rear boundaries on Avon Road. I and my neighbours have a right to privacy, not just in our houses, but also in our rear gardens. That is why your local development plan has got two different figures and I have printed that off for you tonight. The twenty-five metres is the distance required between buildings. The fifteen metres is the distance that the new houses have to be to our rear boundaries. The planning officer has been confusing these two standards, but you cannot trade one off for the other. Essex design standards have focused on this point, I've printed that off as well. Line four says, "New houses may not encroach any closer than fifteen metres to an existing rear boundary", even though with a closer encroachment, twenty-five metres between the rear of the houses could still be achieved. This is not just a recommendation, this is a clear minimum standard in the local development plan. The rules made by this council must also apply to this council. The applicant today should be invited to revise the plans, perhaps with fewer houses, to ensure that they adhere to the local development plan and fire safety standards or consider an alternative plan for this site such as rewilding, given the presence of protected species.
Thank you. Mrs Coots?
I haven't been called Mrs Coot for a while. Sarah Coots, twenty-six Medway Close.
That's what I have here.
One of the questions that I sent through was about the blocking of the access to the back of our house. They're in our deeds as they are for Richard and Lisa. That's number twenty-five and twenty-six. The current plans block our access and we'd like it back please. Another of the questions was about the access to the derelict garages which Rachel alluded to. We recently completed a test of a pan technican and a concrete lorry into the area. He got stuck, which Rachel has alluded to before, just like the fire service would get stuck. The turning circle does not allow for access to large vehicles and therefore the width of the vehicles given in the planning application is wrong. I've also asked very well whether the construction company, a part of the considerable construction company, a lot of us work in London, a lot of us work from home and therefore that is a question that's remained unanswered because of noise pollution. The documents that were submitted also shows that there's no asbestos in the garages. Well, we know that there are. Two years ago when they tried to clear it, they found asbestos and then didn't have the protective equipment they needed and therefore stopped asbestos removal for nearly two years. That ends my questions, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. councillor Hawkins, obviously you can take your time.
Thank you Chair. I think the residents have raised some interesting points this evening. I don't want to repeat what they've said and I know that councillor Davison already submitted a statement online which summed up some of the concerns they've had. And whilst these properties will provide some much-needed affordable housing, particularly larger homes for families and the plans also include sustainability features like the PV panels and the EV charging points which is commendable, there are some concerns that need addressing. Some of these do kind of repeat what the residents have said, but also with some recommendations as well to hopefully negate them. So as previously mentioned, Medway Close is an extremely narrow road with an existing severe parking problem despite what the pack says. Recommendations around that would be to create some additional parking spaces in Medway Close, potentially using some of the existing green spaces. Alternatively, access to front drives could be created for any properties, possibly by offering dropped curbs at reduced cost to residents. The next issue is the site entrance is very, very restricted. So recommendations around that would be to implement, potentially implement some parking restrictions on the opposite side of the entrance. This would be before all of the work started. The corners of the site are extremely narrow and there's already quite a lot of evidence that vehicles have driven over the grass and the verges to either enter or leave the site. There's also a recommendation for double yellow lines on the corners of Medway and Avon to protect the junction, again before any work is to start. My third issue is pedestrian access to the site is unsafe in the current plan. So it's shown by a separate footpath on the left-hand side which ends at a bend. So the recommendations around that would be for pedestrian access to the site needs to be separate and it needs to be a safe route for all of the properties in the close. The last issue is around the use of tandem carports and their practicality for the residents. So we'd like some confirmation on the carport dimensions and more than that, whether they would be practical or not. If you've got accessibility issues, they're extremely narrow and you're giving two carports per household and these households are four bedrooms. And also whether they're going to be sized to encompass larger SUVs which would normally accompany larger families with lots of children. In addition to those issues, there's, there's also the concern on minimising the impact on local residents during the construction of six large houses in a very small estate and how it's crucial for community harmony. So as a council, we could consider a traffic management plan. So establishing designated routes for construction vehicles to access the site and ensuring that they're maintained, so no access via the top of Avon Road, no access via Trent Road past the primary school, no access via Thames Avenue. Scheduled construction deliveries during off-peak traffic hours. Restriction on construction activities to specific hours. And I know that you've got some of this in the pack already, but it's under guidance. So I didn't know if there's a way to firm up some of that, either at this session or further sessions going forward. And to limit or prohibit construction on working weekends or as some of the residents have mentioned, they work from home. So if there's something that could be done there. Again, parking has already been mentioned, so I'll skip over this bit briefly. But if there's a way to reserve a portion of the construction site purely for contractor and worker parking to reduce the competition for street parking. Provide temporary off-site parking for local residents affected by the construction, which has been mentioned already. And with regards to communication, establish a dedicated communication channel for residents to report issues or concerns related to construction and to keep residents, to keep residents informed about construction timelines or any potential disruptions. Dust control measures such as water sprayers or dust barriers to minimise airborne particles and regularly clean the streets and footways to remove debris. Emergency access, to have unobstructed access the entire time in all areas and establish an emergency evacuation plan in the case of unforeseen circumstances. To appoint a community liaison officer who can address residents' concerns and act as a bridge between the council, the construction company and the community. Hold periodic meetings with local residents to update them on the progress of the construction and address any concerns. And lastly, to commit to a thorough clean-up and restoration of any damage to road or public areas caused by the construction activities. Lastly, I'll just say that it's essential to balance the needs of this building project with the quality of life for existing residents in the area. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I mean, some of the points you have mentioned are in the guidance and have to be adhered to, so thank you for that. Before I open it to the committee, I'll go back to the officers and we'll see what they had to say about some of these concerns so we can look at more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sorry. So just starting with development standards and compliance with the development plan. So we do acknowledge that there- So, we do acknowledge that there is, the back-to-boundary distance would be less than fifteen metres, which is the minimum standard in the local plan. Fifteen metres should be achieved, even where the scheme otherwise meets the twenty-five-metre remoteness criteria for back-to-back relationships. The properties on Avon Road are thirty metres away from the proposed houses, so the five-metre deficit to boundary is considered insufficient harm to justify refusal of the development, as there would be no demonstrable harm to neighbours due to the loss of light, privacy, or overbearing impacts. So, essentially, we have a ten-metre back-to-boundary plus a thirty-metre back-to-back. So, it's considered that that level of remoteness wouldn't have an adverse impact on neighbours. Further, the windows in the upper floors of plots one to five have been amended so that each property only has one glazed window facing neighbours, which is thirty metres from the rear of neighbouring properties. Councillor Hawkins raised some concerns about sort of noise and noise during construction, and the implications on residents. We have attached an informative to the decision notice to ensure that building works are undertaken during sociable hours between eight AM and six PM during the working week, and eight AM and one PM on Saturdays. If excess noise is received during the construction phase, this will be dealt with by the council's Public Health and Protection Team. And condition thirteen, we, councillor Hawkins again, spoke about a construction management plan, so condition thirteen covers that, which requires, prior to any development taking place, a construction management plan will be submitted to the council and signed off by the highway authority. So, this covers the parking of site operatives and visitors, the loading and unloading of plant and materials, and the storage of plant and materials during the construction phase, amongst other matters. On site access, the proposal includes the widening of the access to five-point-five metres for the first six metres, which will enable two vehicles to pass each other. A minimum width of three-point-seven metres will be provided for the remainder of the access road, which is suitable to accommodate a fire tender and refuse vehicles. The tracking has been modelled by a transport consultant, and based on our assessment and the assessment of the local highway authority, there's no reason to question why it would comply with those standards. We've had discussions with Essex Fire and Rescue, and they've confirmed that they have no concerns with access to the site for fire tender. This will be reviewed during the building regulation stage. If there are issues with the access at building control stage, these will simply need to be raised with the applicant, and the applicant will need to come back to planning with some revisions. On parking demand, so there are currently thirty-two garages on the site, thirty which are not occupied, two which are being replaced. All development needs in terms of parking provision are being met on the site by the proposal. There will be no or extremely limited displacement of parking. If people are parking on the land without permission, this is not material to the planning decision. However, the parking survey confirms there is sufficient alternative capacity in local streets. The wrong parking data was raised prior to the previous committee. This was not, which was not in the public domain. Conclusions on parking were unchanged, and parking data was the same as already provided at pre-application stage. The local highway authority has agreed the impact of parking displacement, if any, is acceptable. And the traffic regulation order to safeguard turning into access can be secured by condition, and any displacement from this area can be accommodated locally as per the evidence provided.
Yeah, so I think there's some questions about access, existing accesses to neighbouring residential properties from the site. So, we obviously have been liaising with the council's property services on this issue. There are some legal rights of access through the site to neighbouring properties. They've been accommodated where they are recognised legally as an access right that needs to be retained. There are some access points which are being raised in representations tonight and in earlier commentary. They're going to have to be taken to the council's property services, because the council's property services have already pointed that they don't recognise those as legal rights of access. Now, we'll raise those with the council's property services. Ultimately, it is a property matter. Those are, if there are legal rights of access to neighbouring properties, they would have to be recognised in law, so it's a property point, not a planning point. The, one of the things I would like to point to is, and it is on screen, is on the plan, the properties along Medway Close, those properties back directly onto the site, there aren't buildings there. So, if it did transpire, and I'm not, there's no prejudice in what I'm saying here, because, like I say, it has to go through property as a legal question. If it did transpire that those properties did benefit from any legal right of entry from those rears of those properties, then it is feasible, you know, they can be incorporated based on the block plan layout. But that's without prejudice to any legal or property consideration that would have to be employed there. So, just to recap, anything that's been legally recognised as being incorporated, anything that currently isn't legally recognised, hasn't been incorporated in the current plan, but we will take those comments over to the property services team to be looked into further.
Thank you. I've got one point I wanted to mention. Asbestos, they were talking about, the residents were talking about asbestos not having been removed. I don't remember whether it is or not. Could you confirm?
Yeah, we could attach an informative which requires asbestos survey to be undertaken prior to development.
I think that's pretty important. Thank you.
Chair, sorry, could I just add to that?
Yes, of course.
Sorry, there is a condition that covers contamination as well, just to point that out as well. There is a contamination condition, so that will be picked up anyway in the run of the, you know, the conditions.
Right, thank you. Right, I will now open it to the committee to speak. Councillor Ashley, sorry. Sorry, councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Chair. There were a couple of points I wanted to make. The first, well, really, I was, I thought that the residents spoke very succinctly and very coherently from their own perspective. We weren't being ranted at and, you know, say, "How dare you develop anything." But what, my own comment, though, is that to refuse an application, we are balancing things here in a committee. And so, if we've got affordable housing, obviously that's a plus point. If the affordable housing is of the exact type that we're particularly lacking in the city, that takes the balance up further, and plus the masonet, again, we've got a waiting list for that type. So, that's, and also, this is previously developed land, when a lot of what's coming to us is green land, which is, you know, extremely politically and environmentally controversial. So, my view is that, yeah, it's not ideal that it's ten-point-five metres and not fifteen. It's not ideal. But the wait, the waiting to me is still in favour of development here. But there was one question I just wanted to clarify, because it was very important. One of the questioners said that the survey had counted every available parking space, even if it would actually be impossible for them all to be used at one time. I really do think it'd be important if I could ask the officers to clarify that, because I think the accuracy on which we're making the decision, I really do think is important.
Okay. Can you go back with that?
Yeah, so on the issue of the parking, so the parking survey, I think it was eighty-four spaces surveyed. So, that's the total number of spaces surveyed in the area, of which there was a proportion of those which would be available to meet any displaced parking need from the site. So, the highway authority has obviously been asked to look at this. It was, the highway authority looked at this at pre-application stage as well as the application stage. They've been out to the site, they've been out to the local area to see for themselves what the parking demands are on an average day, and check the content of the reports over. The bottom line, however, is that the displacement from the proposals is nil or zero or minimal. The existing garages are in a state of disrepair. They're not occupied for car parking. There's two garages that are occupied that are going to be replaced on site. All of the car parking needs that are generated from the development itself are being met on site. There's expected to be some displacement, and I'm talking a handful of cars, probably less than ten cars displaced around the access, because the access is going to be, picking up on an earlier point, the TRO will be put in place to ensure that vehicles can make the turn into the access.
Can you repeat what TRO is?
Oh, sorry, sorry, jargon. Traffic Regulation Order, so it basically means yellow lines put in place to ensure that that junction is kept clear for vehicles to make the turn. So, there will be some cars displaced that would park around that. But we're talking a minimal number. So, of the total number of parking spaces that are in the area, even if there were some car parking spaces that, you know, transpired not to be viable parking spaces, I'm not saying there are, because that's been checked, and we don't believe that's the case. But even if that were the case, there would still be capacity in the local area to meet that parking demand that was coming out of this scheme.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Thompson, if you want to come back.
If I could follow up, thank you ever so much for your indulgence. So, therefore, it would seem that there is a displacement projected here, because previously you'd said if any, so it may be considered small in planning terms, but perhaps if you live in the area, the idea of, you know, eight or nine maybe displaced, that might, if things feel crowded already, then I think perceptions, you know, that could say. I'm still, I'm really not convinced that the weight, that this balance is tipped in favour of not approving the application, but it would seem, just to clarify, that you're predicting some level of displacement.
So, the displacement, just to clarify, so the, the number is probably going to be probably less than ten. My colleague's saying it's probably around two to three spaces, but the, that's if the spaces are even used for parking in those areas. So, this is the area directly, we're only talking about the area directly outside the access, which would have yellow lines put around the two curves coming out of the access and on the opposite side of the access on Medway Close, just to preserve the turning. This doesn't extend any further along Medway Close. This is a very short section of Medway Close where cars wouldn't be able to park. And it being an existing access point, there wouldn't be cars parked on the western side of the site anyway, because they would be within, too close to the junction anyway. So, it'd probably only be the cars that are parked on the opposite side of that road. So, we're talking very, very minimal numbers, up to ten, I'm being told, two to three.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Thanks. I have two questions. The first, would you mind pointing out on this block plan where the parking is for the new resident, for the new development? And the second question is about this back-to-boundary requirement. Obviously, it says fifteen metres. What are we talking about in terms of legally enforceable things here? Because requirements suggest to me that that's not really optional, as much as I completely appreciate how much this housing is needed. I also don't want to open us up to judicial review. Thank you.
So, the parking, so there's two tandems, for the terrace and fire properties, there'll be two tandem parking spaces to each property. We have two, sorry, three visitor spaces, and then another parking space for the masonet, which is under the masonet. So, I believe a total of fourteen spaces.
Just trying to show it on the plan.
Sorry. So, these are the two parking spaces to each property, and then we have two visitor spaces here, another visitor space here, and then another, so one parking space for the masonet.
Okay.
As well as two retained garages on the left-hand side for existing tenants.
Right, thank you. Who else would like to speak? Councillor Pana?
Yeah, the question was about the fifteen-metre bit as well.
I'll jump the gun, bear with us. The second one?
Thank you, Chair. So, yeah, so I think there's been two documents that have been quoted. One is the local plan, which is Appendix B of the local plan, and the other is the Essex Design Guide. So, both reference the fifteen metres to boundary. The local plan, which is obviously the document that we have adopted, we haven't adopted the Essex Design Guide, just for clarity. The table set out in Appendix B of the local plan states that you achieve a back-to-boundary distance of fifteen metres between new development and an existing boundary. Where the local plan differs to the Essex Design Guide, and this is one of the reasons why we didn't actually adopt the Essex Design Guide, because there are differences between the two approaches. We actually make an allowance where you do meet, where you're otherwise meeting the residential remoteness standard. We actually do allow you to come down from the fifteen metres to the boundary. And this is explained in one of the asterisked pieces of text in Appendix B. So, what we've got here is a situation where we do have remoteness between properties in excess of the minimum remoteness that we would otherwise have to have. That minimum remoteness is twenty-five metres. We've got thirty metres. There is, in terms of privacy to residential gardens, yes, of course, we're trying to protect the properties and the gardens, but where you do have that kind of remoteness, you won't have the privacy concerns. The, in typical linear street patterns, you will always have overlooking, for example, from upper-story windows. You're always going to have, and that's always towards the rear of the garden. The garden area nearest to the back of the house is always considered the most private zone. The areas to the rear of the garden are the least private zone, because they're the areas that are going to be naturally overlooked from surrounding properties on any housing estate. Given that we've got this remoteness in place, that private zone is still a sufficient distance away from the new properties that we're looking at.
Okay. Okay, councillor Pana.
Thank you, Chair. I'm trying to understand this. If fifteen metres is the minimal requirement, I mean, and thank you to the officers for, you know, doing what you're doing. I'm trying to understand, how are you justifying that that wouldn't impact the residents from their point of view? So, if you were that resident, would you still allow this development to go? The second question is from, so there's three officers, probably two officers have been answering. Can I ask who has been the site officer who's gone there from one of you both? And visited the site in person?
This is a team effort, as you will understand. So, the officers who've come here today are presenting the information that covers all the offices that have been involved.
Thank you, Chair. But the reason is because when, because I myself live in a development where I feel when you're actually there, it's different to... when you're actually there, it's different to when you see.
Understand.
Yeah, so that's what I'm trying to ask because they're representing somebody else for you. When somebody else for you and somebody else for you, things actually differ.
Of course.
So I'm just trying to get clarification on that. Thank you.
I mean, all I can really say in response is that an officer has been to the site, there is a case officer attached to assess the application, an officer has been to the site to assess that. In terms of, would I allow it if it was my property? We are looking objectively at standards that have been adopted by this council. That's what we're here to do and that's all we can really respond in terms of. We don't attach emotions to this, we look objectively at each proposal based on the standards we have before us.
Sorry, councillor Thompson first and then councillor Armstrong.
I saw that, ladies first, thank you Chair. Yeah, a couple of queries please. The parking issue. I note that the survey was done, the hours that were, that sort of the survey was done during the daytime rather than the evenings when surely a better sort of judgement of how the parking is utilised around that area. It seems to me that the times of which the survey was done was actually pretty much when people are going to be out. Far better of an evening when it would perhaps have a better, you know, better judgement on it. One of the things I've noticed on the block plan here is where you're intending to increase the width of the first six metres of the driveway. Looking on the block plan, you have the boundary of the driveway going up against the side of the property itself, whereas where I look on Google Earth to the actual, there looks to be an existing building next to it and so it's a part of the property. I wonder if the officers perhaps could clarify what the situation is with that particular property? I don't know whether it's one of the residents here, but I won't go into that. And again, the other query was, I read very diligently through the flood risk report etc. And I wonder, I have to say, I found it quite technical and I wonder if you wouldn't mind just giving me a very quick idiot's guide, if you like, of the issues faced on this development and what the mitigation is? Please, thank you.
Shall I go to councillor Armstrong before we go back to the officers, otherwise it's constantly back and forth.
Okay. Bring a bit closer apologies of you. Touch technical. I'll start on a couple of technical items. Drainage strategy, you have suds up at the front entrance, which is porous. Unfortunately, it looks like our road's higher than the neighbouring property next door. Can we just check that? That may have to be adjusted. Obviously, we want porous, it's good for suds, but flood management, neighbouring property next door appears, at least the boundary of their garden appears to be half a metre lower. Just another one on drainage and planning, there's a foul line running through the development which seems to have constrained and helped come to this design. Unfortunately, garage one is over the top of it and the corner of the other building appears to be over the top of it. Might just be a simple diversion, but can you either provide clarity on that now if there is a build over scheme on that or just look at that? There was a comment from a councillor online, so Stephen Robinson, on one of his comments that he put online, he mentioned PV panels. I couldn't then see that on the plan. Is that part of the plan? Or if not, why is that being a comment from a councillor on the planning documents? Final thing, just as a, my initial look at this scheme, when there was the additional access to the north that we will obviously need to review, although not a planning matter, why the scheme wasn't almost flipped the other way? So you had a more straight road coming in, which would have then meant that all these residents could either, if they didn't have an access, maybe even looked to put an access to mitigate parking, could have maybe put their bins out the back, which means that the bin collections don't have to happen on the main road of the existing properties on that bend. And also, it just would have given the houses south facing gardens and we could have had PV panels on the back of them effectively. So it's just why, why was it this way around? I know that's not definite planning, but it has planning implications.
Yes, we have to look at what is in front of us, but obviously, it's quite interesting to look at what could have happened, but you know where we can...
So on the parking surveys, so yeah, we had surveys carried out at various times of the day. I would make the comment that this, the Essex highways have been consulted on the proposals and they deem the proposals to be acceptable, so that includes all the information provided. I suppose the salient point is that the displacement of parking is fairly minimal, so the survey data that there is, the parking can be accommodated in the local area is relevant. The block plan showing the width, so we, property have acquired the property 30 Medway Close, which is why we've been able to widen the access.
You have some...
Sorry Chair, did you want me to come in on some of those other points? So on the flooding, the flood risk assessment, so we're not talking about fluvial flooding, so flooding from rivers, it's surface water only and it's only because we're in a sort of critical drainage zone, so it's just a recognised area where drainage is a little bit more challenging. These aren't imposed by the Environment Agency, they're imposed at Essex level, so they're kind of informal in a way. Nonetheless, what the FRA looks at is the surface water capture on site and how it's going to be dealt with so that you don't displace that water to other areas that are downstream or just topographically down the hill. So what that does is it captures the water on site, so a lot of the water is going to be captured on gardens, so that will infiltrate into the ground straight away or over time. The trick is trying to capture the stuff that falls on the hard surfaces and deal with that, so that's not displaced, that's not running down the hill. And what happens is that you do choose porous surfaces so that you can filtrate that water and put that into a drainage system. In terms of drainage systems and the issue of a foul drainage line, the Angling Water, who would operate that sewer line, will have to be in agreement with the development. If they have assets on the development site, they would have to sign off their own separate agreement, legal agreement with the developer. And if that does involve a diversion, fine, if it involves a bridging contract, fine, but that would be something that the developer would deal with with Angling Water Direct, not with us. I would just actually, just going back a step, I'd like to add that the lead local flood authority, Essex County Council SUDs, who imposed the critical drainage area, have looked at the, and signed off on the flood risk assessment and signed off on the scheme that has actually now been agreed in concept and that will go forward as part of the development going forward. I think that was it.
Sorry, councillor Armstrong made a point about PV panels. So they're, not to my knowledge, they're not included on the plans. I believe they're in the planning statement, but we have confirmation from property that they will be installed.
Can I just ask, on which side of the building?
We'd assume south, but it would be, you know, where it would have value.
On the front elevation. On the front elevation of the building, is that?
Yes.
Thank you. councillor Sampson.
Thank you. I think overall for this development, it's, there are a couple of things which bring it really close to the line for, where it could go either way in the balance, a bit like councillor Thompson was saying a few minutes back. I do think that now I've seen where the parking is, that they're kind of back to front, which basically means if you're not leaving at the same time, that is a bit of a problem because you might be left moving another car to get your car out etc. I think there is a possibility that then that overspill parking first goes into the visitor's space and then goes further into the, you know, the existing estate. And I think lots of other comments about sort of how tight this site is make it quite hard for me to support it. I appreciate how frustrating that is when there's a family, you know, likely with kids who are stuck in a B and B or some other even less appropriate accommodation. As I say, obviously, I'm not here to approve a planning application that could have been, but as the council does already own the site, you know, it doesn't mean that other proposals can't come to us that possibly don't have quite as many houses on. I feel quite conflicted to be potentially wanting to decline an application for affordable housing that could take this many people out of, you know, really awful situations, to be honest, not just on a human level but also for a financial level for the council. But yeah, on balance, I think this site is really tight and I'm quite, I am struggling to see how this is the best proposal for it.
Okay councillor Sampson.
Thank you for bringing me in again Chair. Just to add to the debate and what we've just heard, I believe there's a comment that this might not be the best application for the site. I don't think, in my understanding, is correct, that that sort of comes into it on a legal ground. That's the thing, that's the thing. Could, yeah, do you know what, I would have liked to have seen it 15 metres, I really would, I really would, but that's not what's in front of us. So can the officers just confirm that we are allowed to, particularly these distance things, that we are allowed under certain circumstances to weigh the balance and apply them in a flexible manner and that that is okay for us to do that?
Yeah, as, as explained, the Appendix B is quite clear, quite clearly worded, that where you are otherwise meeting that remoteness standard, you can reduce that 15 metre to boundary distance. And if I may, just on the question of considering alternatives as well, we are duty bound to consider what is in front of us, that, we, yeah, we have to consider what is in front of us. We can't consider alternatives and those alternatives, although they might seem palatable in some respects, may have issues as well, so they're not tested options, so we only consider what's in front of us.
Thank you. councillor Fascona, you put your hand up.
Yeah, hello. I do tend to agree with councillor Sampson actually, that it's very, I'm struggling to accept this, even though these houses are so very much needed, but it does look very, very tight with the parking. And the officers mentioned that, and residents mentioned that cars do park there now on this site and that we shouldn't take that into account because they're not supposed to park there. But nevertheless, they do park there, so they will be displaced, they will be trying to park in the surrounding area, so that will increase the number of vehicles that are trying to park. And I can't help wondering, like one of the other councillors mentioned, why it wasn't turned the other way around so that the gardens...
We can't look at that, so please stick to what we can look at.
So looking at that, it's a shame that the gardens back onto each other and that we have this problem with the 10 metres, so.
Thank you. councillor Highland.
Thank you Chair. I'll just move the subject on to the access point actually. The residents placed some concerns, not only post-construction but pre- and during construction, the access point there. That also looks very difficult to me, to be a place to bring in construction traffic and not disturb the neighbourhood greatly, but also post-construction, the traffic in and out, I'm particularly concerned about the public, the footpath area that seems to fade away and then, let me ask the question, does that mean the footpath fades away and people have to walk in the road heading towards traffic? I guess that's my key takeaway.
Councillor Pana and then I'll go back to the officers. Sorry, I think, yes, go ahead.
Councillor Papa.
Yeah.
Right, so when I initially looked at the first image that you guys showed me, the photograph, I felt like, oh, that place is a great ideal place for development. But then I personally believe after listening to all the concerns from the residents and also taking into the consideration there's been some compromise in terms of the basic standards, it's put a question to my thought, to my initial thought. And I think this needs to be, I don't know, to be reviewed. I know there is a need for housing, but at the same time, as one of the officers said, we don't attach emotions to it. I mean, we always, I mean, we talk about housing, it is an emotion. So taking that into fact, also considering the emotions of the current residents, I think this should be my personal views and...
See councillor Hall.
Thank you Chair. My concern was safety and obviously safety of the future residents. I know there was, some of the residents mentioned the access for fire vehicles and how tight that was and I think you gave some statistics. I got quite confused with that and given what people are describing about the parking, that worries me even more in terms of how a fire truck would be able to access this site. I don't know if you could just alleviate my fears there, but at the moment, I'm thinking this is dangerous.
Thank you Chair, if that's okay to come back, yeah. So, sorry, shouldn't have touched it. What's on the screen currently is a tracking drawing, which I'm not entirely sure what vehicle that is, but there's a number of vehicles that have been tracked as part of the application to show that they can make the turns. In terms of the, actually, sorry, I can hear some grumblings and I know there's been a point raised about the overlap. Now, what actually happens, just to explain a point that was raised earlier, sorry if I can. When these are modelled, they're modelled on software, so it's a specific proprietary software that deals with movement of vehicles and it's all computer modelled. What they do is they superimpose, they take that off the model, they superimpose it on the planning drawing and sometimes there is a little bit of an overlap. It's just a copy and paste job just to show that the, you know, this is how it works in the context of these planning drawings. The, so if there's overlap, it's not an actual physical overlap of any physical structures because the model wouldn't allow that. The access route is, it allows for passing at the first section, there's a pinch point of 3.7, that's the minimum pinch point that you're allowed, you're allowed that for a period of distance into the site, that's entirely acceptable, the Highway Authority have signed off on that. You then have an adequate turning facility, that turning facility then allows your fire tender to reverse to a point where they can unravel their hose. It's all measured on distances so that they can, and those distances are based on hose length, but are also just based on the maximum they're prepared to travel in reverse, so that if they get a secondary call while they're on that first call and they need to disappear quickly, they can do that and they can get out of the site in enough time. Now, we have spoken to the fire officer last week and confirmed all of this and they've said that's absolutely fine for this stage for planning... And, and they've said that's absolutely fine for this stage, for planning stage. Of course, it will be looked at at building regulation stage, that's always the case. And if there were, as, as, as my colleague said earlier, if there were any issues at building regulation stage that required any tweaking whatsoever, all it, all it would take is for the, for the developer to come back to us and say, these are the changes that we need to make to make this acceptable. That's the same for any other issue that comes into the equation under building regulations, if there are any changes required.
Sorry, it's only open to the committee now. Thank you.
And the footpath issue, if I may, sorry, just briefly. Yeah, so the footpath is a, so what we're coming into is a shared surface environment. So it's a low, low traffic zone of, it's an estate road. So within that, it is acceptable to terminate a, a footpath and have people actually walking within a, a shared surface environment. And that's, that's what exactly is, is happening here. And again, the Highway Authority have been party to these proposals.
Councillor, thank you. Councillor Thorpats.
Thank you, Chair. I think before, before the meeting this evening, I was broadly in favour of the proposal, to be honest with you, a brownfield site for affordable housing. But as the debates, debates gone on, I think a lot of issues have clearly been flagged up. You know, safety, privacy, a number of issues. And I think for me personally, I'm, I think, I feel I would benefit from actually being there on the ground and seeing the site. So I'd, I'd like to ask the question as to whether it would be possible for us to have a, have a site visit as a committee, so that we can actually see the site and make more of an informed decision.
You would have to ask for that to happen, and you need a seconder for that. And you have to explain your reasons exactly in order to have that, because we don't have site visits very often because of the amount of information that we are given. So bear that in mind for a minute. We've got, yes, we have another speaker.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I would personally like to second that suggestion that we, or proposal that we have a site visit.
And have a firm proposal.
Yeah, and that-
A proposal from councillor Thorpats to start with.
Thank you, Chair. In which case, could I propose that this planning committee takes a site visit to be arranged by officers of the council, so that we could, we can view the site, subject to this application? The reasons for such a visit, to my mind, would be that issues have been raised around safety, access points as well, privacy. And I think, I, I feel that for us to make an informed decision, a site, a site visit would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. And you?
Julie's seconded.
Thank you. In that case, I will take it to a vote. All those in favour of a site visit, please put your hands up. Yep, okay, all those against. Okay, that is carried. It will go to a site visit.
Sorry, point of order. Sorry, can I just make a quick point of order?
Yes, good.
Just, just to understand that, so in effect, this application is therefore deferred? Is that what we are saying?
That's right. It is deferred for a site visit. No decision is made at this point.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. And you will be informed of when the site visit happens, but that's purely for the committee. Thank you very much. That is the end of that item at the moment. Okay, everyone, please leave quietly, because there's another application to look at. Thanks, everyone. Right, can I have quiet, please? Can I have quiet, please, so I can go on to the next, next application? Thank you. Item seven, twenty-three, zero, one, one, six, seven, F U L. Little Cleetop, South Street, Great Waltham. Can we have the officers' report, please?
Good evening, Chair, and good evening, Committee. Sorry. This item is for householder extensions and works to the property Little Cleetop. The application site is a single-storey bungalow located within the defined settlement of Great Waltham. The property is, the property is located north on South Street and is the first property on your left as you enter the village. These images here show the existing form of the property, including its single-storey garage to its frontage. The drawings here show the proposed front and rear elevations. The proposal raises the roof to match the neighbouring property Clermont, introduces two new dorma windows to the frontage, a first-floor extension above the existing front projection, a wraparound balcony and a single-story to the front and, a single-story front, extension to the rear. Members will be aware from the green sheet, the proposal has been amended following the officers' report. The amendments include removing the external staircase and the relocation of the air-source heat pump to the western side, away from the neighbour. These drawings show the proposed side elevations. For the first image, I've highlighted the bathroom window which faces, which would face Clermont. This is to be obscure glaze with a high opening and has been conditioned as such within the report. This is to ensure the overlooking, that there is no overlooking from this window. In the image, I have also highlighted the privacy screening for the balcony. The details of this is to be secured by condition. The second drawing shows the side elevation facing towards the open fields. The amendments to the scheme have removed the external staircase from this side, lightening the frame and the overall appearance. The drawing also shows the relocated air-source heat pump. This is to the opposite side of the property and away from the neighbour. These photos have been taken from the application site and facing towards Clermont. It shows its bedroom window. The proposed dorma encasements would not project forward of the existing front elevation of the application site. This photo here has been taken from the inside bedroom, inside the bedroom of Clermont. The window provides views over the application site's frontage and its roof. It is acknowledged that this view will change from the window. However, it's not a material consideration. The dorma windows, the, 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 the proposed dorma windows will not project forward of the front elevation. This would only, this would not extend fully across the window of Clermont or provide an unacceptable loss of light or overbearing. The first-floor extension is set over 10 metres away and does not extend the full depth of the existing single-story projection, as you can see here. The works will alter the views, but again, this is not a material consideration and it will not impact or create unacceptable levels of overbearing or overshadowing. In terms of design and appearance, these photos have been taken from the frontage of the property and show that the mature hedging and dense vegetation provide screening to the site, offering glimpse views from the street. These photos have been taken from further down, as on the approach to the village, again showing high levels of screening and limited views of the property. So to give more context on South Street, these are the neighbouring properties. So Clermont, as we've mentioned. Here it shows the variety of housing and the modern additions to the street. Clermont itself has already added solar panels to their roof, displaying modern materials. Oh, sorry. No, it's okay. Oh, you can't hear me. That's fine.
But it's just a little bit, that's better.
Okay. Sorry. No, 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 sorry, apologies. Okay, these here, all in the photos, are on the opposite side of the street, again showing the modern additions and different variety in the house types. Overall, the proposal would have limited impact on the neighbouring property and would not result in unacceptable levels of overbearing, overshadowing or overlooking. Given the mixed street scene, the modern design would not be harmful to the character of the area. Therefore, this application has been recommended for approval.
Thank you. Right. Can I have Mr. Wren come forward, please? Or Mrs.? Yeah, okay.
So I'm Sinead, I'm with Andrew Wren.
Sorry, just speaking to the microphone.
I'm Sinead, I'm with Andrew Wren. We live in Little Cleetop at the moment. We moved in in 21.
Okay.
Okay, so having moved to Great Waltham in June 21, we were fortunate to find Little Cleetop with its wonderful location. Unfortunately, the bungalow itself was and, and still is in need of significant improvement. Since moving in, some personal changes mean that not only will Andy's children live here with us after university, but his father with disability, his, his condition's worsening, so he's going to have to live with us probably as well. Our priorities for this build are to allow for a bigger, more practical family home, two-story home, to maximise energy efficiency, including integrated solar panels, insulation and a heat source pump, to use environmentally friendly materials to complement the neighbouring houses with the same pitch roof and mimicking their west elevation for consistency on entry to this part of the village, to blend in with soft natural materials and tree planning, tree planting, sorry, and also to be creative, all whilst working within our limited budget by keeping the same discreet footprint set well back from the road, using existing foundations and making the most of the views of surrounding nature. During the extensive pre-application process, we have listened to the planning team and mending our design to consider the neighbours by, for example, significantly reducing any anterior projection of the first floor and recently providing an alternative heat source pump location, ensuring privacy with screening and removing the external staircase on the west elevation, as already said. At all stages, even before application, we have informed and been available to neighbours and to the parish council in its meeting, where there were no objections. We have listened to our architect and to the council to reach a layout and design that hopefully works for everyone and doesn't impose on anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Proctor.
Thank you. My wife and I moved to Great Waltham 30 years ago, when I was appointed the vicar of the parish. We quickly fell in love with the village, became involved with many of the activities in this busy community and made many, many friends. So when my term as vicar ended, we decided that we must stay in the village. And stay we did, and eventually, we managed to purchase Clermont, which came on the market and we snapped it up. So thirteen, eighteen, nineteen years, next month, we will have lived in Clermont. And we began the process of turning it into our forever home. And it was ideally placed, views over the farmland, enough space for, to develop gardens that have become a sanctuary for wildlife and a quiet, secluded space for tired old people to relax in peace. When, two years ago, Sinead and Andy moved in next door, we welcomed them and we fully expected that they too would want to create their forever home. Who wouldn't? It's a lovely place. We were not and are not dumb enough to believe that we wouldn't have to make any adjustments to accommodate their dreams. Change happens and we have to, all have to adjust to it. However, when we saw the plans, we realised that they proved, they provided a serious problem for the one place fundamental to our feelings of wellbeing and peace of mind, namely our bedroom.
Just stop me, but we have all your information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, is there any information that the officer wants, officer wants to come back with before we open it to the committee? Ah, sorry, yes. I will come back to you in a minute. Can you deal with what you can, and then if councillor Steele comes in, then? Yeah, that's, he can come in afterwards.
So you'd raised two points in your comments. The one was to do with your outlook from your window and the second was to do with the air-source heat pump. I don't know how early the green sheet went live and available to public or the amended plans. The air-source heat pump has actually been moved to the other side of the property and shouldn't cause any issues in terms of noise and disturbance. It's at the furthest point away from your property now. Okay, and then going back to the first one, the spacing between the window you're talking about and the dorma casement is, there's over three metres between that measurement. The dorma, let me just get my measurements out. The dorma will create a slight change to the view. Again, this is not a material planning consideration. The distance provided is sufficient to say that the impact would not be harmful so much as to justify refusal in terms of overbearing and loss of light to this room.
Thank you. Councillor Steele, my apologies.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First of all, I actually have to declare an N R I, non-registol interest, on the basis that I'm a close associate of one of the objectors who is here tonight. We're both members of Great Waltham Twinning Association and Great Waltham Parish Productions. I sought advice from the monitoring officer, who said I should disclose such N R I and then withdraw from the meeting whilst you deliberate. But I can go out there and I can watch you on screen, apparently, but, which seems a bit strange, but I heed the advice of the monitoring officer. So if you could speak up a bit more, I might be able to hear you. Let me start by saying that this application presents me with some difficulties. I have an obligation to represent all of my constituents. And so in this case, I feel a duty to both the applicant and the objector. The application is quite extensive, quite an extensive enlargement of the current building, which in itself is not a major issue, given that there are on three sides, there are no other properties. However, it is the impact on the neighbour in Clermont that worries me most of all. However, it is the impact on the neighbour in Clermont that worries me most of all. Whilst then that might not be a right to a view, I would have thought a less intrusive extension of the upper story at the front would be more sympathetic to the neighbour's long-established view and of light. It's unfortunate, but nevertheless the case, that the neighbour's Clermont windows, bedroom windows on both sides, are on the sides of the buildings rather than the front and the rear. The dwelling to the other side, to the east of Clermont, has been extended as well, but the adjacent part is a single-story, so is not quite so intrusive. On this new side, the Cleetop, the first-floor extensions, which go out to the front, project halfway along Clermont's bedroom windows, and is only two metres away, and that's kind of the issue really. I do understand that the applicants may have concerns that actually Clermont bedroom overlooks their front garden, and the first-floor dorma would actually cut some of that and reduce that. But to do so with a structure that's only two metres away from the bedroom window just seem obtrusive, and a more modest dorma arrangement on that side, I think, and to increase the distance and reduce the feeling of being hemmed in. DM29 does actually require that development proposals must safeguard the amenity of the occupier of any nearby residential property by ensuring that development is not overbearing and does not result in an unacceptable overlooking or overshadowing. And I know that's kind of a matter of opinion and subjective, but it does seem to me that this development does have that impact on the amenity of the neighbour at Clermont. The other aspect I was going to speak about was the distress that's been caused to Clermont neighbours by the location of the air-source pump, which until this morning was between the two buildings and on the one side that wasn't free to the air. And I was going to talk about, you're supposed to have one and a half metres out in front of an air-source heat pump, and that wasn't possible. Therefore, I do welcome... I do welcome and very relieved to hear that the air-source heat pump's going to be put on the opposite side. One of life's major stresses is to fall out with your neighbour. And I would love to see the two parties somehow reach an acceptable, acceptable compromise. I don't know whether that means the application has to be rejected, or whether it can be sent away to work out if there's some way of reaching a compromise. As a final comment, something I would just like to add, I noticed the amendment as well remove the spiral staircase. I have to say, I actually like the balcony on the other side. I think that's a great addition. If I lived there, I'd love a balcony like that. And I actually thought the spiral staircase was in keeping, so I don't know why that's been removed as an amendment, but maybe the officer's suggestion, but it was okay by me. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thanks very much, and thanks for raising that information.
I have to go now, don't I?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
And I concur that we hope that the neighbours will be able to reach compromise. Thank you. Right, was there anything there you wanted to come back on?
Yeah, that's fine. So his first comment was basically the size comparison. We're going from a single-story bungalow, but it's within the defined settlement of Great Waltham, and it's... The proposal is to extend the property, and an easy way to do this is going up. Again, it would be matching the neighbouring property in terms of height. Then we... I think the next thing he mentioned was then the impact on the neighbour. Again, he mentioned that it's long-established views, and I understand that this is... Has been the view from the bedroom previously. The changes here are only going to where you can see the red mark. It's not over the whole view of the window. There is going to be limited change here. It's not a planning consideration in terms of the right to a view. He also commented on the dorma window closest being overbearing. From the measurements of the drawing, as I had mentioned, it's over three metres from the window, and it wouldn't adversely impact the living environment of Clermont as enough to justify a refusal. Those are all comments.
Okay. Thank you. Right, I'll open it to the committee who would like to start. Surely somebody has a point of view? I'm sure you all have points of view, but councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start. I have to say that I really do feel for the neighbours. Having had a view for so long, and inevitably, development happens, as we all accept. And it is a real shame that planning law dictates that we cannot consider the right of a view. So I do very much sympathise in that respect. But I just... My concern was whether the distance and the angles were according to the development standards, and I believe you've already commented that confirmed that that is the case. There's an obscure window on the side, which again, there won't be any overlooking. Yes, it is an unusual design. I think as the years go on, we will see more and more unusual designs like this as materials become more efficient and we go for more sort of insulated sort of properties. It's a bit unusual in the street scene. I had a look along Google Earth and the street view, and yes, it is... It will be slightly unusual, but that is, again, it's... That's all sort of organic growth, isn't it? I have one very, very minor query, please. On the front elevation, the proposed front elevation, there's a... The diagram, it looks as though on... I think it's the landing window. It looks as though it's like a balcony, or whether I... I'm not quite sure whether it's a wall or a balcony. See that? The big dorma on the right-hand side, is that a...
It's a Juliet window.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It doesn't project forward the space.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Well...
I was going to echo very much what councillor Thompson's just said, that it's just such a devastating impact on the neighbour. And unfortunately, in planning terms, there's absolutely nothing we can do about it. So I just have every sympathy for the neighbours, but not much this committee can do about it, I think.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Chair. As has been expressed, it's perfectly possible to have sympathy with the situation, but in a quasi-judicial capacity, not actually be able to sort of intervene in that. And can you just confirm that, you know, it was very neighborly of councillor Steele to want to see compromise? But am I right in thinking that these disputes, or potential for disputes in neighbours, again, are not actually a factor in making a legal decision? So unfortunately, I don't think that we could defer in the hope of something else coming up. I think we just have to judge it how it is. It would be lovely if it worked that way, but I'm sorry, I don't think it does.
Hopefully, everybody will settle down. Any others? No? In that case, I will suggest that I put forward that Little Cleetop, South Street, Great Waltham, the application be approved for the information on page five to six plus the green sheet changes. Do I have a secondor? Councillor Thompson? Yes, thank you. All those in favour? Okay, looks like everyone. Thank you. And therefore, the application has been approved. Thanks, everybody. Now, I have a couple of things to mention to the committee, so please stay put at the moment. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and hopefully everything will settle down.